Good morning, everyone. Councilmember Schwenk here. I'm going to call today's city council meeting to order at 10:01. We are meeting here this morning at City Hall and we are going to do the flag salute now. So if you have the opportunity, go ahead and stand up and face the flag. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. You may be seated. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Nigar. Councilmember Ron.
I'm here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
And I'm here as well.
And I do see Councilmember Nigar on the screen as well.
There he is.
Hi, yes. I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go ahead and move right into this meeting. Today, we have a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before or during a public hearing in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed in the important notice at the top of this agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only these issues you or someone else raised in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk prior to the public hearing. And item number one is consider amendment number two to the Harveston specific plan, a general plan amendment, and final subsequent environmental impact report. Planning application numbers PA 180569 and PA 180660. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you very much, members of the city council. As Councilmember Schwenk stated, this is planning application 18-0659 and 0660, which is the Harveston specific plan amendment number two and general plan amendment. In terms of the project description, the specific plan does propose a new residential overlay zone, a residential overlay development standards, residential overlay architectural guidelines, a new multifamily architectural style requirements for a private recreation center, and revised landscape design guidelines. In terms of the general plan amendment, it's to amend the underlying general plan land use designation for a portion of Planning Area 12 to a specific plan implementation land use. What that does is that allows the general plan to defer to the provisions and restrictions of the specific plan. And the SPI land use is in effect in the Old Town specific plan, the Uptown Temecula specific plan, the Altera specific plan, and then on portions of the Aurora Pot Ranch specific plan. A little bit of background summary on Harveston. August 14th of 2001, the Harveston specific plan and EIR were approved by the City of Temecula City Council. On August 26th of 2003, city council approved amendment one to the Harveston specific plan. Here's the project location. You can see it in red on the left part of the screen. The project area does include 87.54 undeveloped acres of Planning Area 12 of Harveston. What the project does not include is the existing Mercedes-Benz dealership, the lot east of Mercedes-Benz, the existing Audi dealership, the lot south of the Audi dealership, and then the 11.9 acres of the future French Valley Parkway I-15 interchange. In terms of the specific plan amendment, the biggest part, the specific plan amendment, is adding a residential overlay zone. What's that residential overlay zone? What that residential overlay zone would do is establish a residential overlay on those 87.54 acres where the current land use is service commercial. That would allow that would allow for the development of up to 1,000 new residential units. What the overlay zone would not do is it does not remove the service commercial land use. The service commercial land use will remain and developers would have an option to develop commercial and/or residential units within that project site. And then again, just to show exactly what we're talking about for the overlay zones, everything in the blue hatched out areas, you can see the two dealerships and then the parcels adjacent to the two dealerships, which are not included. The residential development standards that are being added to the specific plan, couple of requirements is each future individual residential project is required to prepare a fiscal impact analysis, required to participate in a community-wide extraordinary public benefit, and that's as determined by the City of Temecula City Council Winchester Hills Ad Hoc Subcommittee. And products would also be required to provide a noise analysis if required by the city. They also are doing a permitted, traditionally permitted land use matrix, parking requirements, private open space, recreation amenities, and then, of course, setbacks, building height, lot dimensions, walls, fences, entries, private streets, everything you would see in a specific plan. In terms of new architectural guidelines, of course, you know, City of Temecula, we want the four-sided architecture. On residential projects, we're always asking for enhanced garage doors that match the architectural style, using offset wall planes, vertical and horizontal building features, colors, to break up the mass of large buildings. What that allows us to do is not have square box buildings developed in the city to get the architecture that we expect as planners and as members of the city. And then obviously, the overall design aesthetic. There is one new architectural style that's being proposed, and it's being proposed only for multifamily projects, and that's called New Traditional Prairie. What this does is this blends traditional classic prairie style with some updated features. And a couple of those elements of New Traditional Prairie include board and bad siding, low pitch roofing, multiple wall materials, which could include stone, brick stucco, and then neutral colors. And then this is only allowed in a certain portion of the overlay, and that's west of Temecula Center Drive and north of the future date extension on approximately 15 acres of land. And I'll show you right where that is. So in the bottom left, the outline shows all of Harveston. And then the hatching on the left side of the diagram shows where this architectural style would only be allowed. On top of the screen is a rendering of what that architectural style could look like. And then on the right of the screen is that style actually in use as a developed project, not in Temecula, but as a developed project. For private recreation centers, this came about when we had a meeting with the Harveston HOA. So residents of new developments within the proposed residential overlay will not have access to the existing Harveston private recreation centers or facilities. Each new residential project within the overlay will have to provide their own recreation centers. And that can include, obviously, pool, pot lots, barbecue areas, sport courts, all types of amenities. And then those areas are exclusive to the residents of that development. They're not public amenities. And then each of those areas, obviously, will be sized appropriately for the amount of residents per development. This really came about is, you know, when Harveston was originally developed, that recreation center was sized for the residents of Harveston as it's known today. So it would be undersized if new residents were added to that. So that's where each new project will have its own recreation center. We did update the landscape design guidelines within the specific plan, mainly to conform to existing city water efficient landscape ordinance and municipal code. You know, when the specific plan was originally put together, that was 18, 19 years ago, and we've had many changes to landscape requirements since then, especially with drought tolerant and water efficient landscape. So with that, we're updating the plant palette, adding in some new permitted trees and shrubs, new design guidelines for entry straightments, and then new landscape requirements for the service commercial overlay area, which we're adding in the landscape development zone, some ground treatments, Caltrans edge conditions, and then internal street landscape requirements. One of the things with that is what is taking place in the specific plan is a revision to the landscape maintenance responsibilities from where they currently are, which is with the City of Temecula, changing that to the HOA or a private entity for the LDZs within the service commercial area along Date Street, Inez, and Temecula Center Drive. So you see those red boxes on the left of the screen. Currently, the City of Temecula maintains all the landscape development zones or parkways within Harveston. So what it's switching to is any new development that comes in as part of this overlay, the HOA or private entity will take over the maintenance responsibility of those areas. In terms of the general plan amendment, talked about a little bit earlier, but again, it is to amend that underlying general plan land use to a residential overlay portion to the specific plan implementation land use. Again, it allows the general plan to defer to the provisions and restrictions of the specific plan. And where this came about was the underlying general plan land use is service commercial. You can't do residential development in service commercial land use. So we needed to change that land use to SPI, which will then allow for the residential development. This just shows on the top, in the pink, you know, entire area of Planning Area 12 is a service commercial land use. And then on the bottom, what is the proposed general plan land use, which will be in that light blue color. With that, for the next set of slides here, I'm going to turn it over to Kaiser Marston, who's going to talk about fiscal impact analysis that was prepared for the residential overlay area. So I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Scott, and good morning. Mayor Protem Edwards and councilmembers. Paul Mara with Kaiser Marston Associates. And I'm joined today in this meeting virtually by my colleague, Michael Takhti, Senior Associate at Kaiser Marston. We both worked on a series of fiscal impact analyses for the City of Temecula, and I'm going to briefly present our analysis for the proposed residential overlay. And Scott, if we could advance to the next slide, thank you. So as Scott described, we're talking about a planning area that measures approximately 88 gross acres, currently zoned for service commercial uses. Under the residential overlay, could accommodate up to 1,000 residential units. And our task was to analyze the fiscal impact of two scenarios, build out under the existing zoning with no residential uses versus build out under the proposed residential overlay as all residential. If we go to the next slide. You've already seen the map of the planning area, so we'll jump ahead to the following slide. So of that 88 acres in the affected planning area, we're making allowances for one development that's already been approved, the Lantern Crest project, which is about 14 acres, and potential future internal circulation streets and open space at an estimated 20%. So that net site area in question would actually be approximately 59 acres. And we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So in preparing the fiscal impact analysis, we reviewed the city's fiscal year 2020 general fund budget, interviewed city staff regarding specific municipal services and their cost structure for those services, gathered and reviewed market data for the different real estate sectors and, in some cases, project comparables. And then we had to formulate hypothetical development programs for both the non-residential and residential scenarios because there's no specific project under review at this time. And then based on that information, we projected the recurring annual revenues and expenditures for the city's general fund under each scenario. And we can go to the next slide. So for the residential overlay, we've assumed that the 1,000 units would be built out approximately 650 as townhomes and 350 as single-family detached. And that was based on discussions with the applicant and with city staff. Again, just a conceptual development project for the purposes of our analysis. Thank you. So when we look at residential development, we've looked at several projects in the city over the last several years, and we were able to extrapolate from that fiscal impact work that the typical fiscal impact to the city is on the order of $6,370, negative $6,370 per acre per year. And so in this case, for the 59 net acres, it would be 374,000 net negative fiscal impact to the city's general fund at build out expressed in 2020 dollars. But that's about $374 per unit per year. So that's a typical outcome for residential development. And then this slide shows our non-residential development concepts. The service commercial zoning allows a very broad range of land uses. And what we looked at here was a different, a mix of hotel, retail, and office, which arguably are the highest quality uses that could be developed under the service commercial zoning. And we sized what amount of each use could fit on the property if fully built out with that use, which is purely hypothetical because obviously, you would not have 59 acres of hotel development or 59 acres of retail development. But then what we did is we simulated a mixed-use concept, combining the hotel, retail, and office. And that assumed over 700 hotel rooms, 360,000 square feet of retail building area, and about 500,000 square feet of office. So these are, you know, formulated development concepts, not the outcome of a market study or absorption forecast. And then running that through our fiscal model on the next slide, we concluded, again, we express our fiscal impacts per net acre per year in today's dollars. This is the impact on the general fund on a recurring annual basis. These are positive figures. All of these are positive, not negative, as the case with residential. And the combination of mixed-use development, we're estimating is a positive 87,000 per net acre per year or approximately 5.1 million annually to the general fund if built out with this mix of uses and expressed in today's dollars. And that concludes our brief presentation on the fiscal impact analysis. We'll be happy to answer any questions later. Thank you.
So first, I apologize for being a little late. It's been so long since I've been out in my office upstairs, my computer didn't recognize me. So I had to have a whole introduction period. So does anyone have any questions? I...
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Madam Mayor, the presentation is actually not done yet.
Oh, he's not done yet? Okay. Jump in the gun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for that. Want to talk briefly about the community meetings that we had as part of this project. So the first meeting was a public scoping meeting organized by staff and the environmental consultant, who's ESA. And that was part of the subsequent EIR. That meeting was held on August 8th of 2019. It was attended by city staff, the applicant, the owner, ESA, and 41 community members that filled out sign-in sheets. Presentation was made by ESA and staff to provide an opportunity for the public and regulatory agencies to submit input regarding environmental issues to be considered in the SEIR. Also provided information on how to sign up for a digital mailing list for updates on the project. Why we did this, and it isn't really done in the city that much, is we knew just on the scope of this project, we wanted to give the public the ability to be the first to know when a public hearing is going to take place, when an environmental document is going to be out for public review. So they signed up for the mailing list, and then we were able to push notices out them directly to their email. The second community meeting was a virtual commuting, organized and run by the applicant and owner, and that was held on August 20th this year. The meeting was held via Zoom. Staff was there, the applicant-owner was there, and approximately 15 community members. In addition to the meeting, we also requested that the applicant send out comment cards to every resident homeowner of Harveston. So that was in the 600-foot razor project and every notice. And then they also set up a website where the residents could send in questions. Those questions would be posted to the website and then answered by the applicant. Of all the cards that were sent out, we received six comments or questions. Those were received and posted on the website. And if there were questions, they were answered. If there were just comments, they were posted and left for others to read. This project did go to the city council subcommittee several times. First in June of 2018 with Jeff Carmentrero and Mike Nigar. And then in April and September of this year with councilmembers Nigar and Ron. In terms of environmental determination, like I previously stated, the subsequent environmental impact report was prepared. There also is a requirement for statement of overriding considerations for air quality. Project did go to the Planning Commission on November 9th of this year, where they did recommend approval of the project. And with that, staff recommends that the city council approve PA 180659 and 180660 and certify the subsequent environmental impact report prepared for the project. That concludes staff's report. I'm here for questions. Paul, his colleagues from KMA. We have ESA, who is the environmental consultant, and then the applicant-owner and his entire project team are on as well.
Now, thank you. And does anybody have any questions? Mike?
Thank you. And thank you for a good staff report. Subcommittee worked on this for a very long time. A couple of questions, which I pretty much know the answers to, but I wanted to make sure that we got the information out for everybody and, of course, to the public. First, let's talk a little bit about traffic impact. It's a fair statement to say that by changing the zoning from commercial to residential is a traffic reducer. Can you confirm that?
You're correct. So as part of the EIR, we did a traffic impact analysis, was prepared, and it determined that 14,112 less daily trips would occur as opposed to what is currently allowed with a commercial development.
Okay, and then under the current zoning, industrial and big-box development would currently be allowed, correct?
Correct.
And would it be reasonable to assume that if it went to big-box, that we could anticipate delivery trucks making morning, evening, all-day deliveries? Or deliveries in general?
Yes, you could expect the standard operations of big-box stores.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that answer. No more questions for now.
Okay, anyone else? Zach, go ahead. No, you.
Darn it. I was getting so good, too. Thank you for the Mayor Protem. And Scott and Paul, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate that. Can you explain a little bit to me and the public about the growth management plan and how this impacts, this sort of this designation would impact that? And then what, how that process works and what that money could be used for for the future?
Right, so with the growth management plan for this project is how it works is each future residential project that gets proposed on any of the Planning Area 12 residential overlay, they have to adhere to the growth management plan. So currently, everything is, land use is commercial. Residential was never a consideration. So when you're essentially upzoning your density from a non-residential use to a residential use, you need to provide an extraordinary benefit to the city. You know, that could be in terms of physical improvements within Harveston. It could be a cash donation or not a cash donation, a cash to the city. And those improvements could be things such as new LED lights at the Harveston Sports Park. Could be new grading at the Harveston Sports Park. Could be something not even at Harveston Sports Park, but something in the city that's a benefit to everyone in Temecula. It's not specific for the next 300-unit development. It has to be community-wide.
Great. Thank you for that, Scott. Appreciate it.
And Zach, if I could add to that, if that's okay? Additionally to that is the requirement that each new residential development conduct a fiscal impact analysis of its own for its specific project and to identify that specific project's impact to the city for providing city services to that specific project. And once identified, that project would be required to identify a revenue stream, typically done through the establishment of a community facilities district whereby each unit is assessed individually, yearly, annually, to provide revenue to the city to make up for the new cost to the city for the existence of those units. So in Paul's presentation, there was the one example of if the entire site was developed as residential and there was a, you know, $374,000 hit to the city every single year. But because of the growth management plan, each one of those projects will actually have to make up for that shortfall individually. So the impact of the residential is net zero impact to the city's budget. I think that was an important, important point. There are new costs to developing residential here, but there's a mechanism in place to make the city whole from a operating budget standpoint.
Understood. Thank you, Luke.
And just to add to that, Luke, when people purchase these homes, they purchase them knowing what the fees are. So it's nothing that's a surprise or anything like that. They're fully aware of what those fees are, correct?
Right, that's, it's part of their assessment every year, just like their property taxes.
Okay, so Matt, anything? All right, so no more questions. And I know we didn't have any, do we have any public comments?
We do. Protem Edwards, if you want to open the public hearing?
Sure, so I will open the public hearing. And no public comments?
Yes, and Councilmember Schwenk, for the record, did read the rules at the beginning there. So we have five public comments. The first public comment is by Christine Massa. "I would like to provide input as to areas, I believe, the amended Harveston specific plan allowing residential overlay to build the heirloom farms development is deficient in addressing community concerns. These are not adequately addressed in the EIR and I believe require further review before approving any overlay or development. Number one, I'd like to request that there be consideration given to installing a traffic light at the intersection of Waverly and Inez sooner than later. I understand a traffic light needs to be operational before anyone can move into any new residential development, but even the development of heirloom farms is going to bring an increase in construction traffic, new home buyers, and looky-loos to that intersection, thereby increasing the traffic volume. Number two, the EIR does not adequately address how children who live in that development will get to school. This could be addressed by the city's relationship with the RTA and the Route 55 trolley. At the moment, the trolley, which brings kids to Isabel Barnett Elementary, James L. Day Middle, and Sheperdell High School, does not have any stops north of Date Street. If heirloom farms would increase traffic to those schools, then the trolley should provide service to both that neighborhood as well as the Waverly side of Harveston. Number three, along those same lines, I am concerned about the increase of car traffic from the heirloom farms development going to Isabel Barnett Elementary. I have raised issues for years with the city and the school district regarding car traffic to Isabel Barnett because it's already bad when school is in normal in-person session. I was told several times that the Barnett was meant to be a walking school and was never meant to accommodate the amount of car traffic it currently gets, both at its front entrance and the back entrance. An increase in traffic in the main entrance only drives more cars to the back entrance, which is surrounded by houses and children walking to school. With the new heirloom farms development, you have the potential of adding several hundred additional students to Isabel Barnett, and that car traffic is going to enter Harveston at Date and Lakeview. Several accommodations should be considered and addressed before construction is completed. Completely shut down the back gate of Isabel Barnett to car traffic. Red stripe the curbs, install crossing guards, and other district employees to monitor that no cars are allowed to drop off students back there. This may actually necessitate fully closing the gate even to pedestrian traffic because many adults won't care about the red curbing. The school district, in conjunction with the city, will need to completely redesign the traffic flow at the front gate of Isabel Barnett. It's already out of hand with cars stopped in the bike lane, backing up down both Harveston Drive and Harveston School Road. This will only get worse with the addition of several hundred more students. Additionally, we will need an increase in traffic control measures down Harveston Drive between Lakeview and Harveston School Road, crosswalks and stop signs at every intersection. For example, at Wesley Sherborne, Evanston, Ann Arbor, and Newport. I have been told there is a stop sign already planned for the intersection at Newport, but that was months ago and nothing has been installed. I have shared my concerns with both the school district and the principal of Isabel Barnett, but I believe leadership and collaboration on this lies with the city. Thank you for your consideration." The next speaker is Sharon Lieberman. "I just want to comment on the proposal to change the commercial zoning to residential to allow for Harveston to expand to this area and possibly build multifamily residence. I oppose this plan as it will cause even more congestion to this area. With multifamily residence, like townhouses or condos, bring renters traffic congestion, shopping congestion, and more crowded schools and crime. Being a homeowner in this area and having elementary-age children, I do not want to see crime go up or my property values plummet. I oppose..." or my property values plummet. I oppose this proposal. Thank you for your time." The next speaker is Matt Silverstein. "My name is Matt Silverstein and I am a homeowner in the Harveston area. I, like many of my neighbors, am opposed to rezoning this land for housing use. The negative aspects of this far outweigh the positive aspects and the report created to analyze this only provides more concrete evidence against this idea. What makes Harveston a great place is the neighborhood and the fact that it is a mature community. I bought a house here because I didn't want to have to deal with construction being conducted for years to come. The neighborhood is peaceful and quiet, but this will change that. Pollution, environmental factors, noise, and many of the other negatives have been thoroughly discussed in the report. I personally believe more research needs to be done in regards to the increase in traffic that will most definitely come to an already crowded Winchester Road. The traffic on this road is already bad, but adding potentially one thousand extra homes in the area will do nothing but make it worse. I'm also concerned about the school situation. My child attends Isabel Barnett and already has twenty-one kids in her class. How will the influx of new students be handled? The Harveston Master Plan was designed the way it was for a reason. Allowing this change puts strain on a community that was not originally designed to handle such. Why are we so motivated to appease a builder and not the members of the Harveston community that already live here? I am fully opposed to this general plan amendment, and I urge you to do right by the people who call Harveston home." The next speaker is Stephen Trapp. "As a longtime homeowner in Harveston, we purchased our home with the knowledge that the land west of Inez would be a commercial space. The recent decision to build homes was based on your recent decision to change the designation of the land usage with a Clean Environmental Impact Report. This project needs to cease and desist since the SEIR shows there will be a significant impact on the air quality in the area of the project, which includes Harveston. This area has been a family-safe area for years, but the recent opening of Inez has brought heavy traffic. We have been told for years this would be mitigated by the opening of a Date Bridge roadway over the freeway. As of today, there is no bridge in. So to conclude, our family is against this project being built with a thousand-plus homes that will affect the air quality during and post-construction with additional traffic also another contributing factor." And the last speaker is Kirsten Stryker Brown. "I beseech the Temecula City Council to not approve a housing development on Date and Inez Road. It would be horrible for the community. Zoning is and should remain for commercial use, and we were told it would remain a commercial zone when we bought our property. Traffic would be unbearable and the streets could not handle the extra traffic. The air quality in the area will greatly suffer. Crime and vandalism has grown exponentially just in this year alone, and adding more homes and traffic would only add negatively to this problem. We moved away from LA to get away from all of the above-listed negative issues, and adding another housing development would only negatively affect our area that is already at maximum capacity. We cannot handle any more homes. Please, please, please do not turn us into another LA. Please keep your word and keep the area only zoned for commercial. Please do not let us down. We had to deal with so very much of this year, so much, so very much this year. Please do not add to our disappointment and do not destroy our trust in you. Just say a big no to the housing. We need to keep our faith in all of you. We elected our city officials to not only represent us, but to protect us, our safety, and our way of life. Please do that." Madam Mayor Potem Edwards concludes the public comments, and you're welcome to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and I will close the public hearing.
Wait, don't you need to hear from the developer before you close the public hearing?
Do I need to?
Yes.
Okay, oh yeah, of course, they have to present, sure. And I have a question anyway.
Mr. Berry and/or your representatives, if you would like to go ahead and present at this point?
Thank you. Mayor Potem Edwards, members of the City Council, city staff and consultants, and members of the public. My name is Steve Berry and I am the property owner. I'm available for any questions that you might have, can respond to any of the comments that have been made. But after having met with the citizens at Harveston over the last several years, working with city staff, and with the Planning Commission giving us a five-o vote, we agree with staff and ask that you approve the three resolutions in front of you and allow our project to move forward. I have no specific presentation. The staff covered it all very well. But as I say, I'm available to any of you for any questions you may have specifically of me.
I have a couple. Does anyone else have a question? Nope. Hi, Steve, how are you?
I am fine, thank you.
So answering the concerns in the public comments, confirming, because we heard, you know, duplicate concerns about traffic, and of course, that's always a concern for the city also. So, under the commercial zoning, they would actually have more traffic than they will have with this development of homes. Is that correct?
That is correct. Right now, under the service commercial, there would be at least twenty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty average daily trips in the area. With the residential overlay, it would be eight thousand six hundred and forty-eight if it was all single-family detached. But since it will be a blend, it will be less than that. So there's actually over fourteen thousand less trips coming into the area with the residential overlay if it was all built out that way than in the service commercial.
And so, and we have no way of knowing if those individuals right now attended any of the meetings or returned a postcard or anything. So I just wonder if they were aware, because that's a huge decrease in traffic.
Oh, it's significant, and it significantly reduces the impact on the air quality by taking those trips off the street.
And then the other issue that was brought up earlier is that, you know, who knows what, if it were commercial, you would get, you could get a big box store. And trucks deliver all night long, you know, all day and all night going in and out. And every time they back up, they've got the beep, beep, beep going. So, you know, with commercial, there's also the noise factor.
There is. The way that it's set, we could, the buildings can go up to five stories in the service commercial. And it's allowed for approximately one point two million square feet of a combination of things, whether they would be hotels, office, retail, or in today's world, much more likely on the industrial and the distribution and all of that, the impact would be far greater to the community and to the environment with the service commercial.
Well, let's just say, or possibly an Ikea.
It's, that's a potential. Big boxes are always a potential.
Right, okay, I just wanted to reiterate that and clarify. So no one has any questions, comments, discussion? Subcommittee, anything?
Well, I have some comments. Is the public hearing closed?
I'd like to ask one quick question, and I was trying to get some clarification on. So just, just to be clear though, you know, I don't want us to get caught up in a traffic discussion that says it's a reduction in in traffic, because right now there's nothing there, right? So, you know, let's not, yeah, so let's not confuse the issue, right? So it, you know, so redoing the zoning and having something built out there doesn't result in a decrease in traffic. No matter what gets built on that property, there's going to be a net increase in traffic, right? It's just, right? Well, it's just the scale of what you would expect. So if we kept the property as a commercial property, there's a certain level of traffic that we'd expect. And if we change that, you know, partial zoning to, you know, allow, potentially allow for residential, then, you know, that changes the scale of traffic, right? So, you know, I'm wondering if in, within the staff report, if we could have somebody just comment a little bit on that, that issue. Because, you know, what, I mean, there's going to be a net increase if anything gets done out there, even if a single-family home gets built. You know, that's one more car, two more cars on the street, right? So can we just talk about that for a second and sort of address the, I think, one of the larger concerns about, you know, any development? And keep in mind that, you know, just because a property has been held vacant for a number of years doesn't mean they've given up any and all rights to do anything with the property either, right? So Harveston at one point had nothing, and Harveston at one point had opposition because of things like traffic and increased, you know, pressure. So, you know, every time we do a project in town, we're going, you know, it's whoever was here first, you know, kind of gets to say. And so I just, I was hoping we can get staff to sort of weigh in on some of the features or things that will be done to help alleviate the concerns.
I think I can, I can start out on that, Mr. Ron. Yes, you're right, it will be an increase over the existing condition because nothing, nothing exists there now. But the, the application calls for the addition of the opportunity for residential and not the elimination of the commercial. So the commercial is still a possibility. And so all of the infrastructure improvements, traffic infrastructure improvements that were previously required are still required. So I think that that's, that's important, so nothing changes there. And then I, I think I can turn it over to maybe Scott or someone from Public Works who can, who can talk about the specific mitigations that need to take place for traffic. But in a sense, nothing's changed. The timing may have changed a little bit, particularly on the Waverly stoplight, which is being brought forward considerably in the timeline. But the, all the improvements that were previously required are still required.
And Matt, just, just to clarify, the reason I asked Steve the questions I did was I was trying to address the concerns expressed in the public comments, and I think, I think most of them or all of them said, please do not, you know, do not change from, from commercial to residential. So I just wanted to make it very clear for those, for those individuals.
If I could add to Luke's comments also, the, the, I think the notion of the, the traffic being reduced is regarding the build-out condition. So at build-out of the city, there would be less traffic on that road if it were developed as residential rather than commercial. So that's, that's the notion of the reduction. But as Luke mentioned, the, there will, there will be an increase compared to the existing conditions on the, on the existing roads. So, and regarding the, the traffic study and the mitigation requirements, as Luke mentioned, the primary mitigation requirement is to install a new traffic signal at Inez and Waverly that is now the always stop, and that is required prior to the issuance of the first building permit for the development there at that location. And, and really, the remainder of the traffic infrastructure in that area is really already in place. Inez Road is built to its full, full width. Winchester Road is built to its full width. Other intersections are already signalized. The other main traffic improvement for that area will be our French Valley interchange. And, and that's in the future. We do have the funding and we're moving forward with the, what we call the Phase Two project, was, which is the addition of the two lanes northbound between Winchester and the two fifteen. And then the, what we call the Phase Three project is the, the overpass, the full interchange, the connector ramps at all locations. And that, that is, is in the future. We do not have the funding for that now. We do have the preliminary designs, the conceptual designs. Mr. Berry has dedicated the right-of-way that's needed for that full interchange that is already in place, so there will not be any encroachment into the, the right-of-way that's needed for that full interchange as a result of this development. So I hope that helps with the explanation, and I can be happy to answer any questions from, from Public Works also.
Well, Steve, Steve has his hand up. Yes, Steve, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that when we first did the development, and for those that don't know, I actually owned all of the property where Harveston is too, and so we're, we're very pleased and proud with the development that is there now. When we first got this back in the early two thousands, the city, part of our condition was to build ultimate improvements that handled not only the Harveston existing development, but the future potential service commercial. So given the widths of Inez, the bridge we did over Senator Tudes, the widening, well, the creation of Date Street, we spent millions and millions of dollars almost twenty years ago. And so with the residential overlay, to the extent that it builds out, the, there will actually be more capacity in the roads than was involved because we built it to handle that extra twenty-two thousand trips, not just the extra eight thousand that would be coming.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Comments?
Let me, let me go ahead and close the public hearing if we're not going to ask Steve any more questions and, or ask a question. So I will close the public hearing. Now we can have comments. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, thanks. Well, as I said, the Subcommittee's been working on this for quite some time, well over two years. I have a few comments to make, and they'll, they'll play out rather interesting. You know, having been around myself for twenty-three years in the city of Temecula, I pretty much have got a chance to watch most of it built out. Being elected in nineteen ninety-nine, I came aboard just ten years after the city incorporated. A little bit of history here is the community at the time Harveston was proposed was split. I voted no on the Harveston project because,
I remember.
That's right, because, because I have to tell you, a great, great many people did not want that project. And I only say this is that it's been a trend when we, when we were challenged back in the early parts of the first decade in the two thousands of what I called the Growth Wars, and it was very contentious. But every time when I hear about people wanting to shut the door, it seems to happen in succession, every four years. The people who come here, live here, like the quality of life, and then don't want anybody else to come here. So it's important that I mention to some of the commenters in Harveston, the people here at the time did not want Harveston development for all the same reasons you're bringing up right now. So that's important, and again, I voted no on that project. Now, it's turned out to be a wonderful project. And had I had that insight, I would have voted yes at this point, so, because I really do like that development. I think we've already established that it's a traffic reducer. Certainly, you know, Councilmember Ron brings up an interesting point. There's nothing there now. Eventually, there will be something there, and what it is as residential will reduce traffic. I want to talk a little bit about the commercial that's approved now. You know, everything has changed. Take you back to two thousand and one, and that was before Amazon Prime, that was before e-commerce, and who could have predicted that? Who on earth could have said that we would buy most of our things online? In fact, it actually, the concept of it was rather negative. You mean I'm going to start buying clothing without seeing it first? Do you mean I'm going to buy this without knowing what I'm getting? And, and, and there was actually a negative concept, but that's where we are now. And because of that, it has changed absolutely completely how businesses conducted. I can tell you without a doubt, and, and I don't expect Harveston residents to know this, but if you travel up to two fifteen, all the way from Riverside down through Menifee, now into, down through Paris, now into the city of Menifee, the big boxes are moving down the two fifteen. And the e-commerce is now getting more and more local. Just, just by way of information, because of obviously the algorithms and Amazon and everybody else uses, but particularly Amazon, they can probably bring up right now everything that's ordered in the city of Temecula and how much of it. So the closer they can get it to the city of Temecula, the less time they have to spend money and to deliver it. My point is, big box is coming. And when they come, they're looking for large swaths of land. The average size of these are between a half a million and one million square feet, and this will be exactly on their radar. So you really do not want these trucks in that area. Harveston residents, please trust your city council in that regard. They'll be getting off the freeway, they'll be making noise, it'll affect air quality, it'll affect just your whole quality of life. The French Valley Parkway was mentioned, and every time, you know, we've dealt with this, I want everybody to understand, over at Gate and Cherry Street, you are going to have an off-ramp. Okay, and that off-ramp is going to turn Gate Street, that is the border between Temecula and Marietta, into a parkway. And that parkway is going to go all the way to Marietta Hot Springs Road and exit on Winchester. It is a bypass. And that Parkway is going to go all the way to Marietta Hot Springs Road and exit on Winchester. It is a bypass. Expect it, it's approved and everybody should be aware that it's coming because I don't want it to be a surprise. It has been on the books as long as Harveston has been on the books. And I don't know if any of that was disclosed, it doesn't matter now, but it's important to know that. Why is it important? Not only is your traffic going to increase just by the very nature of it, but if this goes big box, that's just going to be a route coming down from Hemet and the French Valley area, the French Valley area is full of industrial and big box. And they're going to want to avoid Winchester and they're going to come right down Date Street to that on and off ramp. So understand, your city council may know things that average resident does not know. Also, in anticipation of this, again, your city council in the past, I remember distinctly working on this for years with then-councilmember Chuck Washington and the city of Marietta. We facilitated Inez going through to Jackson, again, to, to, to do this. And Marietta pushed back on this for years. The only way we actually got it through was, and, and, and if you ever get a chance and see him around, is thank Doug McAllister as a council member back in that day because he carried the water. We wanted to do an Arizona crossing across that creek, but he held out and did a full-blown, very nice-looking bridge. So a lot has been done in that regard. And I think this is just a, just a, based on everything we know today and everything that I just said, we, the subcommittee, first Jeff Commenter and I, and then subsequently Matt Ron and I, looked at this very carefully. And that's why it took so long before we came to a decision to make a recommendation. And so I'm proud. I know I'm going to listen to other comments of my council members, but I'm also going to move the item. And I have nothing further. You're, you're on mute, Miss, Madam Mary. You're on mute. I can't hear you.
There you go. At one time, our Costco was the busiest Costco in the United States in the early days. So, yeah, the potential for traffic and commercial is definitely there. Zach, anything?
Yeah, please. Thank you very much. So, this is, this is one of those living, breathing document times, right? We often talk about how things are living and breathing and much like our city's living, breathing, so are our documents. And oftentimes when things are written, you know, we have sort of a vision and we're not really straying from that vision. But, but there is, you know, change is hard sometimes. And so I can understand some of the comments and some of the fears, right? Like for traffic and crime and things like that. The reality is, is I don't, don't necessarily think that that's going to come to fruition. You look at Harveston and there's pushback back then. I lived here in Temecula when Harveston was being built. So, you know, while I wasn't on council, I knew firsthand there was that pushback, right? There's always that pushback of new houses. And I think the one thing we overlook, at least from my perspective, is the human capital part of it, right? Like, we all didn't come here at the same time and sort of being willing to let our friends and family move here after we realized what a great place this is. We want that, right? We want to encourage like the best and brightest to move here. So that's important for me personally. And then just when you look at the housing crisis in California, like being a part of SCAG and understanding the regional housing needs assessment and the fact that we, we need housing units for people to live. And there is a housing crisis in California and you're seeing that with the price of housing just soaring right now. So I'm not too concerned about a development going across the street, sort of drawing down property values in our city. In fact, I think I'm fairly confident it's going to be complimentary to Harveston and, and just the surrounding area in general. Given what I know about living in Harveston, it's a great community. It's a wonderful community and I would expect nothing less than that. I mean, I think that's the starting point, right? For new development going forward, that's where we want to start. We want to start there. So, you know, I, I think moving forward as projects come in, we'll definitely have to look at some of the impacts to the school. And we can work with the school district and the school board to sort of try to mitigate some of those things. But just as those projects come in down the road, those are things we can have that conversation about. But again, it's, it's just one of those, one of those interesting conversations we have. We want people to live here. It's a nice place. And, and again, I'm, I'm confident if, if there are housing units that, that end up being built on this property, that they'll, they'll be top-notch. Thank you.
Matt, anything?
Yeah, just real quick. So, so the reason I brought up some of the, the questions I have is, you know, not to discount the, the, the traffic issue, but to emphasize that, you know, things will occur, mitigation measures will occur, but those measures were based off of, and Pat and Luke, correct me if I'm wrong here, but those measures, my understanding is, are based off of the highest potential development that will, would potentially occur, which would have been the commercial development. So those mitigation measures are still planned for this project. If, you know, through this action, the zoning is, is changed and the overall impact is, is lessened because it goes to residential, those higher-end mitigation measures for traffic will still be in force. Is, I just want to clarify that that's, you know, kind of what we're talking about here. The other thing, and this is, you know, this was one of the things I mentioned when I first ran for city council and still very much believe this today, is, you know, the, you know, at that time, Temecula was about eighty-five percent built out. And I remember saying, you know, that last fifteen percent is critical and it's, it's our identity moving forward. And if we mess up on that last fifteen percent, we've permanently damaged the city of Temecula, right? And, and so I, I say that because I don't see this as a damage. I see this as a benefit to the city of Temecula. Mr. Berry brings forward, you know, and his team, a plan that is more in line with where, and like Mike mentioned, more in line with where we need to go as a city. And I just say that, you know, just because there's a vacant piece of property out there, you have to recognize that at one point, you know, back in nineteen eighty-nine, most of Temecula was a vacant piece of property, right? And so we, we created these master plans and general plans and specific plans to give all of those property owners who own that, that land the, the rights that go along with it, saying if you comply with all the laws and regulations and things, this is the expectation of what you should be able to do with that property. That right is, is, is not just, you know, part of the planning that Temecula did years ago, but it's also a constitutionally protected right, right? We gave, we gave those owners and I, you know, and identified a potential use into the future. And, you know, and, and it's not that anything is being done right now to exercise those rights. This specific plan simply changes that and says we'd like something a little bit less on the property than what we anticipated, more in line with what we, you know, see. And fortunately, staff and Mike and I were able to work very closely with Steve and others to kind of align this with where we think, you know, Temecula is going and what's in, you know, the city's best interest. For us to, you know, and, and look, we're, we've all been in that place where we see a vacant piece of property next to our homes or, 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 you know, our community and say, well, we can't, you know, we can't allow that to be developed. Well, not only is it unconstitutional, but, you know, that, I mean, that was the master plan for, for Temecula. And so as we get close to that hundred percent mark on build-out, you know, I think it's important to recognize that we scrutinize this very carefully. And like Mike said, you know, we, we do spend a tremendous amount of time. And while this, you know, hearing may not, you know, last for hours, you know, everybody should know that, that we've spent hours and hours behind the scenes talking and trying to decide and, and, you know, negotiate this discussion with, with Steve and the property owners and the project proponents to the place where I think everybody was, was more comfortable. And like I said, at the end, was, was a net benefit compared to what was proposed originally, right? So, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll end there, but just to say, you know, I think, you know, overall, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with, with, you know, what was done here. And I'm, I'm confident that, you know, into the future, the Harveston community and, and, you know, everybody up in that part of Temecula is going to see this as a, as a good, as a good project.
Thank you, Matt. You know, I remember during the Harveston, the opposition days, and one of the opponents of Harveston, who was also running for city council at the time, called, actually called it Shanty Town. He said it's going to be a shanty town. Do you remember that, Mike?
I do.
So Harveston Residence, as gorgeous as your neighborhood is from one end to the other, an opponent felt so strongly about it that he called it Shanty Town. And it, you know, nothing could be farther from the truth. So, or further from the truth.
Man, if I may add to that, because it's a good bit of history. At the time, nobody could conceive of homes on twenty-five hundred square foot lots. It was, it was anathema because people came to Temecula thinking they could get a larger lot.
And most of them had been up to that point.
Yeah, yeah. So, so Harveston at twenty-five hundred square feet, small houses, that's why people thought they'd be shanties. Who would have known today they'd be the most expensive city in Temecula? Yeah.
And I certainly think that this project is not going to change that at all. In fact, I think it's going to enhance, you know, and Date Street also, it's going to be very convenient for, for the residents who live there. And the other thing it does too, if, if any commercial ends up going there and people will patronize that commercial and they won't have to get in the car and drive all the way across town, you know, to, to someplace. So it is going to be beautiful. And I know Steve Berry does beautiful work and has beautiful projects in beautiful places, I might add. So I have no qualms about this. And I hope that the people who wrote and expressed their concerns today, I hope they have, you know, a better understanding if they're watching, that the ultimate traffic count will actually go down by fourteen thousand, if, if, you know, calculating everything to its highest and best use. So I'm satisfied with that. And if there's nothing else, I guess we, I will entertain a motion.
Well, I have a motion on the table.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Then I'll entertain a second. Is somebody muted and said second? Matt, did you?
I can, yeah.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Potem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
All right. That is unanimous. And congratulations, Mr. Berry. We look forward to seeing a beautiful development there. All right. So, nothing else. I think we are ready for adjournment. If I can have a motion and a second.
Move adjournment.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, staff. Logging off.